Seven o'clock and we'll call the April 16, 2015 meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order, and if the administrator recall their role.
Anderson, Bagelmann.
Here.
Dane.
Here.
Frankie, Huser, Olson.
Here.
Payne.
Here.
Solheim.
Here.
Wilson.
Okay, first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. You received that via electronic mode, but any changes, additions, deletions? Do you hear a motion?
So move. Move approval.
Second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, so the agenda is approved. Let's go to the minutes of the March 5, 2015 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Do you hear a motion?
A motion to approve the March 5 meeting minutes.
I found one little correction, Ben, on page nine. No, page two, item B1, the Scharnhorst name in the third paragraph down is SCH.
Okay, thank you.
It'll mean something to them.
Thank you.
Other than that, any additions, corrections? Okay, those in favor, if you'd say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Minutes are approved as presented or as slightly corrected. Let's see, communications, anything, Ben?
You should have, well, the Board of Adjustment agenda from April 13. So you see that agenda there. They ended up approving that variance request for what it's worth at a setback of two feet from the east property line, three feet from the north, and an overall height of 19 feet.
Okay. Anything else?
That was it.
Okay, going to regular business. Before we get into the single item on the regular business, a little, couple of points of clarification are in order. The Planning and Zoning Commission has nine voting members. Five members attending constitute a quorum, and a quorum defines the number of members that must be present if business is, that the business done is to be legal and binding. So there was some question out there about, you know, how many people have to come, you know, if you have five out of nine voting for something, is that a good representation? That's what quorum is about. The second piece is, is that I think is interesting, and hopefully be interesting to you, is in 2014, the commission was asked to consider expanding the number of members from seven to nine. Now, this had a little impact on the percentage of members attending because if you had seven and four were the quorum, that's about 57 plus a little bit of the percentage. If you have five of nine, it's only 55 percent. So actually, as a percentage, we kind of moved backward a little bit, even though we expanded the breadth of the commission. We are a recommending body and not a legislative body. The commission makes recommendations to the Waverly City Council for their consideration. So just to set the stage so you have an idea as to what we do and how we fit into the whole of the city. So let's move to item C, regular business. This is the reconsideration of rezoning requests from R1 to R3 with zoning agreement for the 1,000 block of Second Avenue Northeast. City staff is requesting the commission to reconsider a zoning request from R1 to R3.
Actually, that was incorrect. It was four to two with three absent. And actually, it was, I have that tally incorrect.
Okay, we did pick up on that, and we'll go to that in a moment. The Waverly Real Estate LLC is requesting the rezoning of approximately 2.7 acres located on the northwest corner of Second Avenue Northeast and 10th Street Northeast. The request is to change the zoning designation from R1 to R3 to allow for the potential of condominium housing development on the subject property. Comprehensive land use map designates the property as residential. Staff has drafted a zoning agreement to address the concerns expressed by the public and the commission and to propose for the council to review and render a decision. Staff is requesting the commission review and recommendation, and recommend on this request and the corresponding zoning agreement. Ben has pointed out that there is an error, both with respect to the vote, but also with the term, I think, reconsideration. In my view, we voted in March to approve the change from R1 to R3. That's done. The minutes reflect that it was done, as do the staff notes. So what I would suggest we do is to move on to the staff-prepared zoning agreement, and let's spend our time working on whatever council we can offer to that. I'd like to make sure that even though this isn't a public hearing, that there be a time we'll set aside so that members of the public who are here can say whatever they would like to say. I think that's healthy. We've had, what, six weeks since we met, and I know there've been some conversations between the folks and the staff here, and see if we can't bring this a little bit closer together. So with that, let's start the discussion, Ben.
Sure, I can kind of start it off. And in your packets and electronically, you have, before you have an agenda memorandum I provided, this is basically the similar agenda memorandum that I prepared for the council at their first reading of this request, and I've changed it slightly for the benefits of addressing the commission. And the last paragraph is kind of a summary of kind of the last two paragraphs is kind of the meat and potatoes of why we're here tonight again. So a petition of protest was received by the city from at least 20 percent of the residents within 200 feet of the area. And what that means is it triggers a need for the council to do a supermajority, or three-fourths of all the voting members of the council, for this to be approved. And staff was also aware of the comments that were made from the general public and some of the concern that was expressed. And so after following some research and how other communities addressed this, zoning agreement was deemed to be probably the best alternative after initially considering that and saying it's probably best to have a simple rezoning, you know, voted up or voted down. Well, following research, we have prepared a zoning agreement following a model from another community that's widely accepted. And so the zoning agreement, and so we're going to add that as kind of a companion piece to the ordinance amendment, so it'll run with the land, okay? So that's kind of a quick summary of why we're here tonight. So I'll go through the zoning agreement really quick. So the zoning agreement, you have Exhibit A at the end of the ordinance. If you click on the ordinance that the council was considering, it's broken down into four sections, and Section 3, those are the conditions of approval, okay? The property improvements, I'll just read it. The property improvements located adjacent to the west property line will have effective drainage measures in place to control drainage from the developed properly, property, and so as to not create additional water flows onto adjacent property. So in other words, the west side of the property was deemed to be a high drainage concern area, so we obviously are going to pay a lot of attention to that for drainage. So they're required to take measures to not create additional water flows onto the adjacent property, okay? We're going to attempt to control that with any means necessary. Second point is structures developed will be limited to one story above grade maximum. We didn't want a high-rise structure to go on the property. Thirdly, only one driveway with no more than two connections to Second Avenue Northeast shall be developed to service all the structures on the property approved by the city of Waverly. In a nutshell, we don't want more than one or more than two connections on the Second Avenue. So in other words, each duplex wouldn't have its own unique driveway entrance point. We're not going to allow for that. Third, only one dri, or, excuse me, fourth, that will be each separate structure shall be limited to no more than two individual dwelling units, and the total number of structures shall not exceed five. So again, what we're saying is, when you're connecting units together, we don't want more than two connected, and of those groupings of two, we want no more than a total of five total, so 10 total units of duplex style, for lack of a better term. So these are kind of added to the ordinance proposal as an exhibit for consideration. So should council, you know, decide to vote approval of this, this would run with it and would run with the property. The property owner has signed off on this, the purchaser, potential purchaser, Waverly Real Estate LLC. And so frankly, I think council, I know, is interested in hearing what the thoughts of some of the commission members, I think, too, that weren't present for the first time. So I'm glad to see that those persons are in attendance tonight, too, to kind of see how, what are your thoughts on this zoning agreement language?
Ben, would you take just a moment for the benefit of the commission and perhaps some of the folks in the audience to talk about run with the property, what that in fact means?
Sure. So should the property be bought and sold? Following some research today, this will run with the land. Whoever buys the property after it's sold would have to follow these terms, okay? Should they be decided to change these terms, they would have to be agreed to in writing and again brought forth to the city council for consideration as an amendment to the ordinance. So this will run with the land, run with the property. Until such time, it's requested to be changed.
Again, for the benefit of the folks, you can go online and you can get minutes, for example, of these meetings, city council meetings, but especially these meetings. If you go to the March meeting and look at the minutes, you will find that I think everything that any of you had to say about this project is recorded. So it's not something that just went by people, but it's in the record, and it was those records and some of the other discussions that we had between members of the commission while you were here, all of those things went into the thought processes to come up with the, these recommendations. I'll tell you what, maybe this is a good time to ask. If anyone would like to say something, please come up, use the microphone, give us your name and where you're from, and try to limit it to three to five minutes. That helps all of us, and it makes sure that everybody gets a chance to say something, but anything that anybody has for right now, and that won't be the only time you get a chance. So is there anything that anyone has?
Darrell Hirsch, 1038 Third Avenue Northeast. I just want to, the house right across from the water tower. And the way, the way I understand it, you guys, you guys don't vote tonight on this, right? Because it's already been voted on, or?
Well, they will, basically, to say, are they okay with the, are they recommending approval of the zoning agreement language?
Oh, okay.
The zoning change has been voted on by us as a recommendation to city council, but not the zoning agreement. We're dealing with the zoning agreement based on an R3 zoning.
Well, maybe this is something I should, maybe I should bring up at, at the public hearing that we got, but I was wondering, the zoning that, that bought the old Drossie Farm, it was, what is that, is that zoned to?
It'll be zoned to, it's being requested to be rezoned to an R1, single family.
To R1, the Drossie Farm is there?
Is that the, is that the farm that's just to the east of the?
It's not behind the water tower. I'm talking to one along, along the side of the water tower. Is that Zone 1 or?
Zone 2.
It's ag right now. Oh. Oh. Because, because I was, I was wondering that, you know, the property that we're talking about here, part of that property is on the other side of the highway?
Mm-hmm.
And the guy that rezones that, he's going to need that property, right, in order to put that road through there? Do I understand that right?
Well, it's a separate development proposal. So ultimately, the roadway will be reconfigured, not necessarily due to this, but this potentially could assist with that.
Yeah.
But there is a request on the east side, correct?
Yeah, but when he puts that road through there, part of that property is, is what we're talking about tonight, right? That little, that little diamond in there? And, well, I was just, I was just wondering, and again, that, you know, if, if this was zoned, instead of zoning it to R1, if we zone it to R2, he could still, he could still come in and, and buy it and still own that prop, that piece of property so he can put his road through there? And plus, you know, at, at R2, he could put, not condos, but what I want, duplexes. He could put duplexes along there, it'd be room for a couple duplexes in that. And my personal opinion, I would think that would be, be a lot better to have some duplexes in there than having condos in, in the middle of the, in the middle of our residential deal than that. And, and if he, and if he can't, you know, if he can't only get so many condos in there, he's still got, I know they can't put one close to the, the street because it's got to stay back, but he, he still needs that, that piece of property in, in that little V there. But couldn't, couldn't we rezon that to two and then have him have that property and use that piece of land that he needs in there? And then sell what he doesn't use in there on that because he can't put it close to the road? Couldn't he sell that back to the city? And the city consider putting a park in there? That's what, that's what my concerns are about it. And then we, we still end up with a park up there, and, but I don't know, by him putting, by rezoning it to two, though, he'd only be able to put how many duplexes out there? A couple, maybe, or three?
I mean, it would be probably less than what's being requested.
Yeah.
Potentially, because what would happen is he would have to separate a legal description for each duplex.
Mm-hmm.
So what he's seeking to do is have more than one duplex.
Sure.
That's what the style that the zoning agreement, that's the only thing this would permit.
Yeah.
And so, so in a nutshell, he's looking to kind of do like a closer than usual and without a lot line.
Put more, put more of them up there than just, like a couple condos, which he would be.
Right. More than a couple, yeah.
And, and like I said, maybe this isn't time to say it now, but maybe I could do that at the public hearing, too, when we have the public hearing. So that, that's just my input on it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I live at 329th Street Northeast. I, I would like to see it not go through as a R3, but if it does, I think it's at least something we could live with, with the extension on there. I would hate to see it, them ever try to build anything higher than a duplex. I think four to five duplexes is really too much for that area. But I do think with the amendment on there, it would be a little more tolerable. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, please?
Terry Cheville, I live at 308 Main Street, right west, the second house in. My property's the, probably the lowest one along that street, and right now, the grading is an issue with me. If they, if they grade that up and then put a, a single-story, even a single-story house, it's going to be in my backyard, it's going to be like a two-story. So I'm, I don't know how the grading is going to be, you know, if they start moving dirt around. And Tim Bruxford on the corner and myself, we're about the same level. So, and another thing, if they put these in, how is it going to affect our property values? I went to work and did a little, little thing of the views we have right now and what it's going to be. If you want to look at it, you're welcome to, but we have a beautiful view out back. And if it goes, do you want to pass it around?
I can pass it around.
I couldn't do it on the computer, so.
Oh, you're okay. This works.
But those are my major concerns. We've already done the gray, the water issue and the traffic, I guess, but so.
Anyone else at this time? Let's start the conversation up here. Ben, where would you like to begin this?
Well, I guess my thought is, what are some of the thoughts and reactions to the zoning agreement language that was chosen? Do you think it kind of hits the mark from the last meeting, some of the comments that were made, the major points of emphasis? Is there anything majorly omitting from what you've heard tonight or from reading the previous minutes or previous meeting?
I personally thought that the adjustments that were made reflected many of the concerns of the neighboring property owners. The, the only thing that really doesn't get addressed that they raised initially would be the park issue, but I, I don't know if there are other plans for park or how that might be, but that, that to me is probably the one thing that may not need to be addressed in here, but isn't addressed in here. The rest seem to be adjustments that, that, as I understand it, are in agreement with the developer, is that right?
Yes, and the zoning agreement you see was signed by Waverly Real Estate LLC. So they're in agreement with that, which is a requirement prior to bringing it forth to council. So yes, they're agreeing with it.
I wasn't here for the very first discussion that we had in March, but I'm fairly well acquainted with that area, and I can understand the concerns from the community in that area as well. And I think the hard part is, is for so long that community, the neighbors have lived without something in that area, and it's, it's very challenging to see new development and to have neighbors and to have that. I know I'm fortunate, I've got a field in my backyard and an empty lot to the side, but I know that at some point, that's going to go away, and, and I'll have neighbors. I do think that the, the items in this ordinance really help, because traffic, I think, was a concern of mine when I first read it. You know, really, really affects that, and water is always an issue, so making sure, holding the developer to the water issues and making sure that's taken care of seems really, you know, like a positive step forward. I think having more mixed neighborhoods where we have single family with all of the housing studies that have been done, with what we heard two weeks ago from the Main Street Iowa group, that Waverly really needs housing, and we need housing that's in a wide range of levels, that we need to consider integrating our neighborhoods a little bit more where we have multiple family. I think the Ramker addition is a good example of that, where there are duplexes and there are multifamilies right next to single-family residents. And it, I don't think it hurts their property values. It's a great step up for a lot of our community, and it's also a step down for individuals who are retiring or downsizing. So I guess overall, I think it, it hopefully is meeting the needs of the residents and also our future that we need for Waverly, too.
It's a real challenge to take multiple pages of notes and comments that are made in a, in a public hearing, try to reduce them to the language of an ordinance. The thing that I'm impressed with here, I, I heard the folks saying that they were really concerned about runoff, but it's very clear that any development that would go there could not put any extra. They'd have to contain the runoff to the present condition. And that's pretty heavily dealt with, so that I think there is a protection. Is it perfect? Probably not, but.
So just utter naivety, okay. So suppose it was a situation where a developer agreed to that and so on, and it, it didn't turn out that way. The developer would still be held accountable then for making improvements to be in compliance with the ordinance?
They would have to comply with the ordinance. And the ordinance says you can't have more than what you have. Will there be anomalies where you have a, a storm that's of a magnitude that it would have created that condition anyway? That gets to be, I think, a judgment, a judgment call, but the, the intent is you build it so that, that you can contain what would normally be the outflow. Am I missing anything on that, Ben?
Oh, you're, you're hitting the marks, and just, you know, for everybody involved here, I mean, so the, the minimum threshold is three acres, and this is not going to meet that size requirement. However, with this language included, though, and I know in dealing with past similar developments such as this, you look at it as a piece of property that's sizable, and when you start paving over and putting rooftops and putting, you know, gutters and draining them, we're very aware of where that's going to end up because it's taxing on the public infrastructure of how that water is going to be conveyed, and it goes somewhere, folks. So we, we're very aware of that. We try to do our best, you know, curb and gutter where necessary. You see that a lot, and why, why do, why do we put that in? We're trying to channelize it and direct it. And there's also appropriate measures, too, that we can take, and sometimes the developers choose to do this, is to do like a detention basin to slow it up, so it's calculated by engineers to hold a certain amount of water for a certain period of time and then either evaporate or slowly release it so it's more manageable for the public infrastructure in this area. So we, our goal is not to flood anyone out. Stuff does happen. I mean, I'm not going to say rooftops and concrete's not going to cause additional, you know, water shedding. That's the nature of the beast, that's what you got. However, with that being said, we can all take measures in our own properties to mitigate that, and it's really up to us and property owners to do things in a manner that's respectful of that, so. So in a nutshell, we, at the onset, we'll review the site plan, we'll scrutinize it, we're going to ask those tough questions of the developer, where's this water going to end up? How much is going to end up there? And then see if we have the infrastructure in place and if they're willing to provide it. So we'll have that negotiation upfront. Until that's done, we won't approve the site plan.
Have you seen a site plan for the layout of five structures at all?
The last one we presented was last month.
Five, wasn't it? I don't remember.
I think there was six there, and I think in discussions, they conceded they were either going to do five or four, but we're leaving the open, option open for five if they can make it work with the proper setbacks and drainage. And if not, then probably four. But yeah, there were six shown, but I think five is what we agreed to with the developer on that. So that's the maximum.
When it comes to lot size, somewhere in here, we see that the average lot surface would be over 11,000 square feet. Normal requirement, 9,000 square feet, you're 20 percent larger than normal. There's plenty of space there for five. I'm really comfortable with that. The verbiage of the exhibit, I think, is excellent. It does the, does everything that was needed. The only problem I have with this is I don't know what we're doing here. You know, the, the reality is, we're not legislative. We don't review council. We, we approved last time to recommend rezoning and passed it on, and it, by Iowa code, is a responsibility of council to make amendments or, or create these exhibits, not planning and zoning. I don't think we should vote on it. I think we should, you know, possibly say, yep, we like it, no, we don't, but not a formal vote.
So what was the process by which it did come back to us?
I think the elaboration, the short, skinny, correct me if I'm wrong, I, I wasn't at the meeting, but I did observe the meeting, I watched a replay in my spare time, I like to do that. But basically, it seemed as though that there was an intention of the council just to say, what, what, what's the impression of P and Z Commission? Is this hitting the mark of some of the comments that were made? Is that kind of the gist?
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. I don't know, I don't recall that city council said anything about, that we said anything about a vote, but I think because we do rely said anything about, that we said anything about a vote, but I think because we do rely a lot on the work that planning and zoning does, and the opinions expressed here, and the actions taken, that there was some new information, uh, that started to play into this through the agreement, and, uh, I, I would say we were just generally interested in, in hearing what, uh, what, uh, planning and zoning thought of those changes since the last time that you acted on it.
And so I was thinking about it, too, kind of before the meeting, too, and I was, you know, kind of in your mindset, too, I was kind of leaning towards that, too, perhaps maybe just go into a comment, uh, kind of, uh, you know, get some feedback from every member, or if you, if you think that's appropriate, Chair. But that, that was kind of the concession I made, too, is to say, and, in kind of the spirit of what Rich was saying, too, perhaps it doesn't need a formal, um, yes, no, vote up, vote down, but I think for those of us, you know, and frankly, our staff, too, we kind of wanted to hear from some of the members that weren't able to attend the last time, too, and just kind of capture, you know, is this hitting the mark, so?
I, I was at the council meeting when our, um, minutes were brought forward, uh, in, in their rough, in their rough condition, and, uh, so, city council has had a chance to read through all of those, all of those comments. I think that's important, because then they can make a judgment as to whether or not this, uh, uh, this particular document, the ordinance, uh, in fact, addresses those things one way or the other. I went through, and I was looking at what was here, uh, it seemed as though, uh, we were paying attention. Now, does that mean everything came out the way someone proposed it? No, but, uh, it, it did get heard, and, uh, I think, you know, Mr. Hurst was saying that, uh, to go to city council when it comes up there, that's a good idea. That's a good idea, that's a place where they can hear it directly, uh, from someone, and people ought to be encouraged to do that. But to my look, from what we had discussed, what we had listened to, and the, the concerns that we had, that the folks had, uh, I think you've addressed them.
So, you know, from the ordinance perspective, the city council will take action on the actual ordinance. We have not done anything to provide input, you know, recommendation or whatever, uh, to that ordinance, unless it's by comment, I, I mean, do you feel we've met that need, or what?
I think you have, frankly, because I think, again, this is, the zoning agreement was kind of a creature of the process, that it kind of came back to say, that was the result of the P and Z, you know, comments, recommendation, and some of the public comments, so we kind of gelled that together in this zoning agreement. What we did is, it's part of the ordinance, and so council's intent was to say, what's the feedback from P and Z upon seeing this for the first time? You know, as opposed to just running with it, and not having a chance for it to bounce back one last time, before it moves forward to a second and a third reading. I think that was the intent.
And I think if I'm not mistaken, this might have played a role, too, and, and, that is, that I think there was an impression, when Planning and Zoning Commission acted on this the last time, uh, or acted on this, um, that this kind of addendum, or ordinance, or agreement, uh, would perhaps not be possible, um, as part of an action, it's, it's, it's either zoned, or it's not, and, and so I think that might be new information for you, too. Um, and so I think, uh, somewhere along, I don't remember exactly what we talked about at city council, without going back and looking at it again, or reading the minutes again, but, um, well, and we don't, uh, city council doesn't have nearly as detailed a minutes as, as, as you do, so I don't even know if it would be reflected in there, but, um, I think that was also a part of it, was that there might have been, um, at least an impression that this kind of, um, uh, ordinance, uh, was not possible with the zoning action, when in fact, it then turned out that it is, yeah.
So more out of curiosity, so as this goes, if, if this goes back to council, the impact of, uh, petition, they have to now pass it by supermajority? Correct. By ordinance, by law, it's six of seven members would have to vote an affirmative for the second and third readings. Otherwise, it's a rea, reapplication, and it comes back here again? Correct. And, and generally, with its recommended denial, it has to wait a period of one year before it can be reapplied again.
So in some ways, it's important that we address...
That's what I was just thinking.
All of those things that could come up, so that they're, they've been looked at, they've been sorted. I think one of those might be, uh, I think you've been able to work out, for example, sewage and water with this, uh, with this application.
This is kind of, um, you know, this will kind of, is kind of a linchpin, this corner, that once you get the water sewer connections here, then, you know, um, there's a development request on the east side of the road, too, that for sewer and so forth, there'd be more connectivity, and a chance for water looping, which is always valuable for neighborhoods, so you don't have to turn off a lot of people, when there's a water leak, you can turn off, and kind of concentrate where you just turn it off. So a long story short, this benefits a lot, uh, on the, on the backside of public services, rather than really hinders it.
So, what, I, I guess, what would be passed on to the council?
Basically, any, any kind of, uh, concerns with the language, if it, if it, if it's good, and you think it's, you support it?
But based on what you've heard, what would you be passing on to the council?
I would say, I think that it was receptive, it worked well to capture the sentiments expressed by the commission, and also the comments of the public. That's why we're bringing it back again. That'd be my comment to council.
And they'll see that reflected in the minutes of this meeting, also. Interestingly enough, I think most of them watch, uh, these meetings, because there's a lot of material that gets covered here.
I guess with comments, then I'll, I'll add, um, you know, as you head east along Second Avenue, and it really probably started back in the late 70s or 80s, there's a number of duplexes that, um, are on the, um, north side of the road, um, as you enter towards that curve on Bremer, and so, in that regard, uh, in driving past there, and just kind of seeing some of the property, it, it is kind of appropriate to see duplexes, so I think some of the amendments that have been changed, uh, make it appropriate, so.
Let's just go around, so we're, we've got coverage. Bill, you've said, and you can always come back again, but Heidi, anything else for the good?
No, I'm, I'm comfortable with the language and the amendment.
I think the le, language covers everything we talked about. I don't see significant issues, or any issues.
I would agree.
Rich?
I think the, the council making the, the, uh, amendment is appropriate, it fits the Iowa code, we all heard about that when we went down to the training session in Waterloo, and, uh, so it came from the right place, which is council. I think it does a good job, and I, I have no, no issues with it.
Last chance for the neighbors, at least here, come on up.
I understand, uh, Gerald Hirsch?
No, just Gerald Hirsch, again, at 10:38?
I just want to make sure you're talking to mics, so the folks at home can...
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, I was wondering if, if this was voted down by the council now, uh, the, the second time, that would automatically go back to one?
Right.
But then, in order, let's say he wanted to get a change to zone two, he'd have to wait a year to do that, is that, to do that, or they could turn right around and...
If, if it's the same request, it has to wait one year. If it's a different rezoning request, they don't need to wait the one year. So, correct, if they were rezoning to an R2, they could apply after it's denied.
After they voted, uh, the three down?
The R3 down, correct.
They could, they could turn around and vote, so he wouldn't have to, he wouldn't have to wait another year to have it zoned, though, okay, that's, I was kind of wondering about, thank you.
I guess that just raises a question, I mean, technically, you could probably do this project under an R2, couldn't you? You could, except you may, um, see a different configuration, it would be more, um, different style of development, versus they're kind of closer together, so you would have a legal lot line separation. So you'd have different setbacks.
Yes.
Right, different setbacks, you wouldn't have a... To Rich's point, I mean, it, it'd be close, that's what I was just thinking, I mean, I think it could be done either way.
I, just to, to clarify, I, I thought somewhere along the line, I heard that five duplex units would not be possible in there with appropriate setbacks in an R2.
We would have to measure it out, to be honest. I haven't done that, to be completely frank, so I'd have to re-measure it, and see what size home they're thinking, and then see, from that point, how close to the property line.
Anyone else? I, I think, Ben, you've got the sense of the commission.
I do.
Do you think that's satisfactory for what the council wants, or would they like us to vote on the sense of the commission that we probably can't describe in 10 words or less?
You know, my, this is just my interpretation and, and, and memory, um, I, I don't think we were calling for action, I think we were looking for, uh, another review and opinion.
So we don't have to take action, as it's kind of hammered out in the agenda, unless you sort of see fit, but I don't hear that coming out of everybody. I think comments are appropriate.
I, I don't, I don't hear it either, but, Bill?
I guess my only thought is, I mean, it was a 3-3, uh, with three absent last time. Well, and I, I got that wrong, I typed it, that was for a different one, I just, that was my error. So it was four to two with three absent.
Three absent.
Yep.
So it was a yes vote?
Okay, alright. I guess I'm indifferent, then, if we vote, if it was a 3-3, I'd say, yeah, I'd prefer to vote and get it on record.
No, we, we did, but, yeah. Anything else?
The only thing I would add, Hank, maybe, is, um, and Ben, uh, you, and I, I don't want to make unnecessary work for staff, I know you're busy, but I wonder if that question will come up at council with regard to R2 and R3, especially?
It will.
Yep, and so, I think knowing whether the developer has any leeway, I mean, if he's limited in any way, um, is, is something that people probably would want to know if that comes up, in order to evaluate the whole picture.
So in other words, could they do what they're proposing in an R2?
Exactly, yep.
I'll research that, and I'll be prepared to present that.
Okay, I mean, and again, if, yeah, if, if we already know that, that's a different, that's a different story, yep. But if, if that's a possibility, I could imagine that question could come up, yeah.
And the applications for R3, anyway.
It is, it is. But if the conversation goes anything like it did here now, it may, you know, but it's, but I would say it's, for a couple of different reasons, it's not spending a lot of, worth spending a lot of time on, yeah.
Anything else?
Did you have another, um, item of business, or...
Yep.
Do we call, no?
Got old business, new business.
We should adjourn?
We are adjourned. Thank you, folks, for coming. I, I, I hope doing this gives you some sense, though, about how government works here, and being here counts for us, and I hope it means something to you, so, thank you for being here.
Thank you, guys, for being here, too.